Good evening, welcome to Town Hall. It is Monday, March 21st around 7:00 PM. This is a special meeting of to consider the appointment of a new town manager as well as take up adoption of the preliminary budget. The first order of business here is a pledge to the flag. Next on the agenda is a land acknowledgement statement which I will read. The town of South Kingston pays homage to the indigenous people and land in which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with an arrogantous tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Next is the roll call. If you could, Susan?
Council President McIntyre.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
All members are present.
That'll move us to new business item 3A which is a resolution related to the appointment of a new town manager.
Make a resolution appointing James Manny as the town manager for the town of South Kingston effective May 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed?
I'll just say, we had a great application process. I want to thank all the applicants who came forward during that process. I think we've ended up with a great candidate here in James Manny whose reputation precedes him, of course. And welcome to Town Hall again, but in a much bigger role here this time.
Any further discussion?
I would like to echo welcoming Jim Manny to the Town Hall. We had an incredible applicant pool, but clearly Jim has the leadership integrity and experience to help South Kingston move forward, and we look forward to having him join the town.
Jim, I'll just echo some of the thoughts of the other council members. We're lucky to have you. We're excited for you to begin. We know you're going to do great in this role, and we look forward to working closely with you to create progress for this town going into the future. So congratulations. So Susan, could you take the role on this one?
Council President McIntyre.
Aye.
Council Vice President Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose.
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion passes, and that brings us to item 3B which is a resolution approving and authorizing documents related to the new town manager's employment agreement. I'll turn it over to you, Mike Risselot, to walk us through the broad strokes here.
Sure. This employment agreement basically follows the employment agreements of the last couple of managers here in South Kingston. And I'll just highlight some of the key terms. As you know, Jim will begin his job on May 2nd of this year. It is a three-year employment agreement. However, that three-year term is subject to the provisions of the town charter which set forth reasons why you would have the opportunity, God forbid, if you wanted to terminate your manager. So, three-year term but pursuant to the terms of the charter. Additionally, the if, in fact, Jim Manny leaves at your request prior to three years, he would be paid six months severance. And again, that's consistent with what has been in past such contracts. His salary will be $170,000 per year. However, it will be adjusted to match the salary of the superintendent of schools. So, you're obligated to look at that as time goes on. There'll be an annual performance evaluation. The benefits that he receives will be similar to the benefits that non-union employees receive in the town. He'll receive five weeks of vacation. He can carry over a total of 10 unused vacation days from one year to the next. There'll be five personal leaves, five personal day leaves, and there is 80 hours of management leave per year. That is new for South Kingston. It's something that was in Jim's Narragansett contract. He asked that the council consider it in this contract. What it's not compensable. It doesn't get added to salary. It has nothing to do with pension. What it's in there for is in the event of a natural disaster such as a blizzard or hurricane, or something goes wrong with the sewer system, the water system. COVID's a good example, where if the manager has to work multiple days in a row, morning, noon, and night, through weekends, it allows him to take some time off without charging it against vacation. That's basically what it is. And he's told me he very rarely used it in Narragansett. It was just something that he asked for just in case. In terms of retirement, he will be joining the Rhode Island Public Employees' Retirement Program. Additionally, again, as you did for your other managers, there'll be an additional 1% contribution to a qualified supplemental retirement program. Other than that, those are the highlights. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for the solicitor?
I just have a question about the superintendent match, part of it. So, we don't have a superintendent at the moment.
Correct.
When one is hired, how would that match? How would that come about?
We would put that on an agenda so that it is on a public agenda, and I would let you know that pursuant to the terms of the contract, let's just pick a number. Suppose the superintendent's salary comes in at $171,000, you would then at that point raise the manager's salary.
It would not be retroactive?
Oh, the superintendent's salary will be going forward, so it would be the same way for the manager.
And if the superintendent's salary is $162, we're not going to match that, correct?
No, you will not be matching that, but if that happens, there'll be a lot of surprised individuals.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike, for explaining all the details to the community. I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the solicitor? All right, do I hear a motion at this time?
Motion to approve item 3B, the resolution of the town manager's employment agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Susan, could you take the role on this as well?
Council President McIntyre.
Aye.
Council Vice President Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose.
Aye.
All members are in favor.
The motion passes. Jim, at this time, I'd like you to call you up if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank each member of the town council. Thank you very much for having the faith in me to become the next town manager in South Kingston. It's a great honor for me, and I really do appreciate your vote of confidence. Well, 22 years ago, my wife Tracy and I, and Tracy's here with me tonight, we were looking for a place to raise our family, our young family, and almost immediately, we decided on South Kingston. We found that, you know, it was a wonderful sense of community here, and there were great schools, our great schools. The quality of life was excellent for a young family, and the natural beauty of the town speaks for itself. South Kingston's never disappointed us in all the years we've been here, and there's no other place we would rather live. We'll be here forever. I have four decades of public service at the federal, state, municipal level. One of the most satisfying jobs I've held, and I've been blessed to have several great jobs, including the one I'm currently at, but one of the most satisfying jobs was the as the Narragansett Town Manager from 2016 to 2019. And I appreciate the town Narragansett giving me a chance at that job. And it was because of the engagement with the residents. It was a totally different skill set than the other years of public service I've done. It was a great opportunity, and it was actually a great enjoyable experience for me. And the reason it was so satisfying was because you knew as a town manager that every decision you made, everything you had to do or you want to do, had a direct impact on the residents that you serve. And that was such a satisfying experience for me. Working at the local level is pure democracy in action. And once again, I worked at the federal, state, and local level, and it was just a joy to see it. See it battle out sometimes in the chambers, but then all either all coming to agreement or agree to disagree, but also every member acting what is best for the residents of these beautiful cities and towns that we have in the state. I'm very excited to have this opportunity, and I can't tell you how appreciative I am for this tremendous opportunity. And you are right, it was a very detailed interview process, one of the most detailed I've ever been on. But once again, that was also nice to see that you put so much thought and effort into who you wanted to lead this town. I promise you, the town council, that you have that have put their faith in me and the residents of this beautiful town that I belong to, that I will serve in integrity and transparency, and I'll give 100% efforts every single day. I thank you again, and I feel just so fortunate to be standing here today. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jim. All right, that'll bring us to item 3C which is a resolution relating to the preliminary budget. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to Terry Murphy who has a presentation.
Good evening. I have a few slides for the council to go through some of the information that I provided you last week with regards to a request for options to consider for the FY 2223 budget. Just a little bit of background or reminder on the summary of the proposed changes for the budget as it was presented on March 1st reflects a 2.2% increase in the tax levy over 2122, the tax rate of $11.02 per thousand. Of course, that is a result of the full property revaluation that the town just experienced. This budget also proposes staffing at the six-month mark for a third paramedic team, which is eight positions. And it also includes the contractual obligations for personnel and benefits across the board. That includes some reallocation of personnel costs related to facilities personnel, and we reviewed that at the work session. And then, of course, the addition of two community resource offices at the police department. That's the kind of high-level view of the major changes for that was proposed for the FY 2223 budget. This table, again, just a reminder, the proposed property tax levy is at $75,745,061, which is reflects that 2.26% increase. It's proposed to level fund the school department, and the tax rate is proposed at $11.02 per thousand.
Terry, if we got questions, we'll just stop here as we go. Go ahead, Deb.
Just something that sticks out that's a little bit confusing. I know it might be confusing to the community is the bottom side of that table. It says that the percent change from the prior year is 23.74%. We're not reducing taxes. 23.74%, so it's sort of a misnomer. The difference between 1445 and 1102 is 23%, but it's not the change in it's not the change for the residents to impact.
That's correct. It is strictly a straight-line percentage of the tax rate decrease. That's from 1445 to 1102. So, for residents, it depends on what their their revaluation was.
Right. That's just a very confusing thing because people think that it's a reduction in the taxes, and that for most people, they're going to see an increase in the tax rate because the budget reflects a 2.26% increase.
That's correct. And I would say that I think we went through some of the property tax revale scenarios at the last work session. That 31% with the full revale, if anybody's revaluation came in at 31% or lower, they will not see a tax increase. If their revaluation was above 31%, that's where they'll start to see some some impact.
So, my question a couple of weeks ago also asked, would we get would the town be getting sort of an executive summary? How many homes saw greater than a 31% increase? How many homes saw the average? What that number looks like? It's hard when you present an average, I think I've said this before, it's hard to know.
Right.
Is it without without the standard deviation, it's hard to know what the mean really means to anybody.
Right. So, we pulled those numbers of the of the single-resident properties, and Zach and I talked about this. By the way, I'm going to take a step back and introduce everyone to our interim finance director, Rosalie Bouchard, who is here with us this evening to also address any questions. Zach is still on as our financial advisor, so pardon me for not having introduced you at the beginning, Rose. So, we did start to look at the breakout of the properties. Approximately 37% of the total single residential properties won't see a tax increase. Their revales came in at 31% or below. I don't have a table or a breakout for you of all of the other the other half of the or two-thirds of the population, but that's where that's a frame of reference. So, 37% of property owners that had gone through revale will not see a tax increase at the 1102 tax rate that's proposed.
Will we have that information prior to the final budget adoption?
Sure, yes. Yep. So, this is just a review of the proposed budget. And again, this just lays out the expenditures based on the various funds, general fund, school fund, and then you have your enterprise funds and some other self-sustaining funds like the guild and the Peacedale Office Building. And the two funds that receive tax support are the senior services fund and the recreation center fund. And this is just the revenue that is anticipated for FY 2223, broken out by the same funds, for a total of $102,559,000 and $453 total. Just a quick look at the property tax distribution again. So, the school fund will realize, based on this budget, 72.92% of the property tax distribution, and the town general fund will be 24.08% of that, the property tax distribution. So, for this evening, and as requested by the council, presented here are some options based on inquiries and requests to look at how the FY 2223 proposed budget might be reduced. And I've laid out five options. I'll go into each one subsequently in the slides that are ahead, but this just lays out the the five options. Option one being the original budget as presented, and then we've got two, three, four, and five, and you can see what the corresponding tax percentage increase would be on the tax levy and the tax rate in the bottom two rows. So, again, option one, I just reviewed with the council. That's the budget as presented on March 1st with the same details. When we get to option two, this is where we are looking to or looked at ways to reduce the budget by $189,176, which would bring the tax rate down to $1099 per thousand. And in doing that, there were a few items that came up, one being the healthcare savings, and this is in relation to the healthcare costs for municipal employees. This when the budget was presented, it was presented with a four-and-a-half% increase on healthcare costs because at the time, we did not have a final determination from the trust. We have since received the the numbers, and the healthcare is projected to only increase by 0.53%. So, there are savings realized there, and that's in the amount of $74,176. There's also detail on the the other piece of that is work-related injuries premiums for public safety personnel. Those will increase by 50%. So, this is the overall savings, knowing that those will increase. Next, we have the reduction of OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, and reducing those to that amount by $85,000. And OPEB is associated with post-employment benefits that include payments to meet unfunded accrued liability associated with current and retired employees entitled to some form of paid medical, dental, life insurance. Over the years, the town has been able to get that to a fully funded position, and at this time, we're able to look at a reduction and still remain fully funded for OPEB. The one thing I would caution is that if there is some kind of claim or long-term high amount of a claim that comes in, that the town needs to be prepared to be able to to cover that. But currently, we are fully funded. Actually, we're a little bit over fully funded, so we have the ability to recommend a reduction in the in the OPEB allocation. The next reduction would be to reduce council contingency to the current FY 2122 year, $55,000. So, that would bring it down by $10,000. In looking back at the historic expenditures on the council contingency, that seemed reasonable. I think there was only one year where there was some funding that exceeded the the actual budgeted amount for for council contingency. We have next is reducing the professional services line in planning. There was an additional $20,000 added to that line item for the planning department, and that was to focus on the Route 1 stewardship development plan and be able to hire outside consulting to be able to assist the stewardship plan committee in moving this along to be able to develop the stewardship plan. It is not the top priority in planning, but we the idea was to try to get that committee to be get to a point where if a consultant came in, they'd be able to pull it together and get it over the finish line in terms of putting a stewardship plan forth. But it's not it's not going to impact town services if that additional $20,000 is eliminated. And that brings us to a 2%. It'll drop the increase to a 2% in the tax levy for over 2122, and a 3 cent decrease in the proposed tax rate from 1102 to 1099 per thousand. Option three is the detail is all of the same with one addition, which is to reduce the debt service fund allocation to 150 by $150,000. One of the reasons that this is proposed is because the town had funded in the current year for funding, assuming there would be a school bond. And so, there was additional funding, debt service funded for that reason. We anticipate a surplus of $800,000 at the end of the 2122 year, so that there is there is a fund balance there that funds could be drawn down or eliminated for this particular 2223 year on the debt service. At the end of FY 2021, there was a $1.7 million balance in the debt service fund. So, there's and over the last two years, the town had been preparing for the school facilities projects and bond funding. That hasn't happened. It is not anticipated that there will be time enough for a bond referendum to pass and be funded or debt service be needed for 2223. So, this would be a time where we could reduce that that debt service fund allocation by $150,000 if the council chose.
Terry, can I just ask you a question, please? So, the debt service fund allocation is essentially a savings account for future debt, right? That's what we're planning for. We're planning for future debt.
Planning for future debt and also budgeting for debt that we have on the books?
Existing debt.
Correct.
So, by reducing the fund by the $150,000, and two years from now, we have that school bond, right? We're not going to you understand where I'm going?
I do, I do.
So, we're not going to be able to I don't see the value in that. We're not going to be able to, I don't see the value in that. I think we should be, it's much like the CIP, right? We should be putting money into the fund so we don't have that enormous impact once the bonds hit.
There is the argument to be made that in order to keep a level payout for debt service payments, that you don't want to fluctuate too much in terms of what you allocate every year. So the town is in a position now where we are relatively low in terms of what debt we have on the books.
The one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction is, what is the entire allocation? If we're reducing it by one hundred and fifty thousand, is that the entire allocation?
No, that's not. The entire allocation, and Rose, you might want to look that, is in the vicinity of eight hundred thousand dollars.
In this year's budget.
In this year's budget, but I'll have Rose confirm that, so we
So we're amending that to six hundred and fifty thousand.
We would be reducing it by one hundred and fifty thousand, correct? If the council decided they wanted to move forward with reducing debt service.
Okay, that answers my question.
Could I follow up? Thank you. So we had, previous fiscal year, put eight hundred thousand dollars planning for the bond, at least one time, right? Probably in nineteen-twenty, we did it as well?
There may have been funding in the nineteen-twenty budget as well, with the anticipation of
So my question would be, how much money do we already have in the debt service fund in addition to the proposed either eight hundred or six fifty that we would be putting in this year? Because I do remember those budget conversations trying to, you know, soften the impact of increases.
Right, right.
However, I would say to the community and to everyone here, with the potential closing of schools, there is going to be increased savings that the school side could clearly contribute to the debt service from the savings that they've realized. So that plays out for me, that I'm thinking closing one elementary school, closing Curtis Corner, we don't, we haven't identified what operational savings that would provide to the school department that we could then potentially, or a future council could ask them to roll into the debt service, correct?
I would say that the school is going to have, if we're, if the town's going to construct a new school, that whatever the savings are on the school closure side, and we, I think we would need to be careful there, too, because the town still owns those buildings, and until there's a plan for what is to be done with those buildings, there's still operational costs associated with them, whether the school is funding those or the town is managing those. I guess theoretically, if there's a savings on the school side, although you also have to remember the school budget hasn't, has been level funded, this will be a third third year of level funding for the school budget. So it's not likely that the school budget is going to come back. School department's going to come back next year with a level maintenance of effort request.
Well, we don't know that, because there could be, that's the end of, that would be the last year of Curtis Corner, so there could be savings realized at the end of twenty-twenty-three that could roll in. There's a lot of unknowns, how much savings they would be able to identify.
Yeah, and I can't tell you what those would be, to be quite honest.
Correct. So that's what I'm thinking, but it also was a council decision, correct? How much, how much we contribute to the debt service? We could turn to the school department and say, since you've realized X amount in savings, this will be your portion to contribute, instead of only coming from the town side. We're basically saving twice.
It's a council decision, but it all comes from the same
We'd have to give it to the schools for them to give it back to us. So, right? I mean, that, I don't see the operation, I don't see the savings there. I also, if memory serves me correctly, eighty-five million dollar bond, and we're probably going to be in that range somewhere. The debt service on that was about two million dollars, is that correct?
I think to start, it's in that range, even if you're starting with just
Couple of years at that, so I don't know. I still think planning, saving for that inevitable expenditure would be prudent.
I didn't know if Rose had time to figure out that question, that how much is in the debt fund allocation?
The, I'm sorry, which, the
How much we've already allocated in previous years?
To debt service.
Correct.
What's the balance as of right now?
Right, so
Does that stand out?
Thank you.
The balance was one-point-seven million at the end of fiscal year twenty-one.
So we've, for the last two years, we've probably put in about eight hundred thousand. And this year, we could
So at the end of fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in now, twenty-one, twenty-two, it, if this eight hundred thousand, which we're projecting, then we're up at two and a half million. But again, you know, you, there is the need to look out two, three, four years and what that looks like in terms of what the debt payment will be once that bond, once those bonds get on the books.
My intent would be to mitigate the hit on the taxpayer in year four or year five, right? So the, if we can put a little away, it's, you know, basic budgeting to me. If I'm going to buy a car, I can put a little away every month till I get the money to buy the car, right? And I understand the need some people have to reduce this budget, but I don't know that that's fiscally sound policy to reduce this debt service fund when we know it's coming at us. Eventually, you know, in, I don't know. I just think it's prudent to put as much as we can into that fund to stop the impact or try to lessen the impact in year four or five to six, seven to the taxpayer.
Just following up on this conversation. Of course, the Fed funds rate has started to increase finally, expecting another fifty basis point increase at the next meeting of the feds. Is that impacting the borrowing rates that we anticipate for the school bond? Do we know yet?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't know yet. I would imagine that there will be, depending on what comes down the pike, that there will be a difference in what the interest rates might be on borrowing in another year or two.
Something to consider, just to follow up to that, is the increase in cost of materials and labor related to these sort of projects. The debt service for that project a year and a half ago was two-point-two million per year for the duration till the bonds mature. Likely looking at an increase in that, increase in debt service costs because of a total increase in the total project costs. So just a fiscal consideration as we think about whether we want to reduce the allocation of the debt service fund or keep what the manager has proposed in their budget, something to consider.
I think you make a valid point. I mean, it certainly, you know, labor and materials aren't going down. So it's more than likely that whatever the bond amount is, it'll be more than eighty-five million dollars. So that's the only difference in option three, is that there's a reduction in the debt service fund allocation, and that would bring the tax increase down to one-point-eight percent and the tax rate down to ten dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand. And then option four, again, it encompasses all of options two, encompasses options two and three, and then added to that is to increase, and this would be to get to a ten ninety-five tax rate, is to increase the unassigned fund balance transfer by one hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, which would level fund it with what the unassigned fund balance transfer is in the current year. So it would be level funded. Again, I think there was some discussion or noted in the memo with regards to using unassigned fund balance and what it's appropriate to be used for. It's it's more likely to be better used for one-time expenditures rather than for operational, annual operational costs. There's the risk of structural deficit, creating a structural deficit. And one of the reasons, that was one of the reasons that we were trying to start to reduce the amount of the unassigned fund balance from year to year, or to better identify what it may be used for. So that was the rationale in reducing the the unassigned fund balance transfer for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. And again, this option gets you to a ten ninety-five tax rate. Again, unassigned fund balance, that's another mechanism with which to look into the future and say, what do we, is it better spent now or when we know we have millions of dollars to consider for major capital projects? And the council can consider that in future years. But overall, from a fiscal standpoint, the practice of using unassigned fund balance is better used with capital one-time expenditures, not ongoing operating costs.
Terry, I got a question for you in regard to the unassigned fund balance. Now, I know we have a policy, we like to keep that balance at ten, in the range of ten to seventeen percent of the general fund budget. You also noted here in the memo that as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, that balance was at eighteen-point-one-five percent. As a result of the budget you propose here, what is the unassigned fund balance as a percent of the general fund budget? And if it's in excess of seventeen percent, what do you propose we do to bring that down within the range of our proposed policy?
So by the end of this fiscal year, it's projected that the unassigned fund balance will be in the sixteen percent range. So you're starting to look at the fund balance going down, back into the range of the policy, the council's fund balance policy, which is between ten and seventeen percent. Let me just see if I can find that. You don't, do you know what the fund balance is? So after, at the end of this year, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, it's expected to be at sixteen-point-six-eight percent after the fund balance transferred to operations and recognition of fair market value of investments in the estimated surplus. So we're looking at that reducing to sixteen-point-six-eight percent at the end of FY twenty-one, twenty-two. And then if we look ahead to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, these are projections based on the one-point-two million dollar budgeted fund balance transfer. It would be down to fifteen-point-one-eight percent, assuming a five-hundred-thousand-dollar year-end surplus. So there's definitely a gradual decline if you continue to use the fund balance transfer year over year at a similar rate.
Thank you, Terry.
Good timing. Could you just explain again? I know in the budget, you have a certain amount that you're taking from the fund balance and applying it to this year's budget. Could you tell me what that amount is?
Applying to which budget? The operating budget?
Thank you.
So it would be four hundred and forty thousand for the current year for the capital budget and eight hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eight dollars for the general fund. And then for FY twenty-three, it would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand proposed for the capital budget and nine hundred and twenty-five thousand proposed towards the general fund operating budget. That's at one-point-two million.
Thank you.
Terry, after the inclusion of the one-point-two million in the FY twenty-three budget, that leaves us at the sixteen-point-six-eight, correct?
That is the estimate on that, yes.
And adding, excuse me, the hundred and twenty thousand? What are we adding to? Yeah, the hundred and twenty thousand. We'd be in the fifteen range, somewhere in there?
Yep. Fifteen-point-one-eight percent.
Okay, thank you.
That would be projected at the end of FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
So the end of your transfer memo that comes out in June, based on this year's budget, what do we typically anticipate getting? Because every year, we have a surplus, and that rolls into the end designated fund.
Right. So we're not projecting, because of the year that we've had, that right now, we're only projecting an estimated surplus of, let's see here, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So if that's the case, that typically, and I won't swear to this number, but it's usually in the million-dollar range where there's the ability to move funds or recommend that funds be moved to capital projects or other initiatives that may be needing funding. We're looking at an estimated surplus of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which just doesn't leave much. Any other questions on option four? And then I'm showing option five. Essentially, that's everything that I've just presented. And then unidentified reduction in personnel and services. If we, if the council were to level fund the budget for FY twenty-two, twenty-three, there would need to be approximately one-point-two million cut, which would need to come out of either staff cuts or service cuts. Even after eliminating the proposed new positions, which is EMS and the part-time, a couple of part-time positions, the two community resource officers, there would still, we would still be left with one-point-two-one-seven million to be reduced to get to a zero percent increase on the tax levy.
That's, you're saying that's, the one-point-two doesn't cover those reductions? The new staff positions aren't included in the one-point-two?
No, those are, no, those are still included in the budget. So we would have to eliminate those, and then there would still be about eight hundred and fifty thousand in additional cuts to make.
So those, those police resource officers, those are federally funded, correct? They're coming from a federal program?
That's correct.
Is that program specifically designated for personnel? Is there flexibility within that?
Those are funded through ARPA, so those have been approved for two-year funding through the Rescue Plan Act, so
That money for them is designated specifically for those resource officers?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little minor thing, the app, were you able to look into figuring out where that line item is and doing away with it for, until we're ready to pick it back up?
So the app, which is just, it costs just under five thousand dollars, it, that is spread, the cost of that is spread across multiple funds.
Right.
To eliminate that, that amount is essentially immaterial. It wouldn't, it wouldn't move the budget one way or the other, for all intents and purposes. That's not to say that it couldn't be reduced or the funds be reallocated to a different purpose, so
So how would we, because personally, I feel like taking some of the consulting money away from planning, who's the only office that's offering up a reduction, to try to shift it over, possibly not spend it on the app, but spend it, spend the five thousand in planning, might be a better use of the money.
Mm-hmm. That is something that could be considered, an internal, you know, That is something that could be considered, an internal, you know, because I... Transfer, that would be up to the council?
It's a very small point, but I think it's an underutilized expense, that I'm sure that planning would make better use of that money for the Route 1 project, saying.
So those are your options, if you choose to modify the proposed...
I do have a quick question for you. You said that projected budget would generate a surplus of 225K. I know these budgets are built conservatively. You budget for revenues to be sort of lower than what we actually collect, i.e., budgeting for a higher uncollectible type of allowance for doubtful, and usually budgeting expenses higher than what they actually are when they're incurred. If we were to pull from the general fund balance to use monies towards that to bring down the tax levy, is that something that could sort of be replenished? Let's say we experience higher than anticipated surplus in the general fund, that would naturally go into the general fund balance by pulling now the 120, hopefully it could net out, sort of thing?
And you mean to pay it back at the end of the year? If, if there's a surplus, to pay back the, the money that is coming from the general fund, unassigned fund balance? Is that what you're...
It'd be like an interfund loan, we'd have to replenish it?
Right.
Because if, if the surplus comes out higher than anticipated, then we'd experience more in a surplus.
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, it'd almost be like a net, net zero, for which we wouldn't have to pay back to replenish. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And that's usually what happens over the years? We sort of budget, and even if we budget a surplus, it's usually conservative, and the actual generation of it is higher in actuality than what's budgeted?
I would have to go back and look at historically, but I believe you're correct. That's, that's true. We're generally very conservative in looking at what the surplus might be, just to be on the safe side.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager?
Questions about in the budget, the outside agencies. So we, we started with one figure, right? And then we had the hearing last week, I think, and that fund...
That's right.
Is, has increased. So how are we addressing that, or?
So thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Kelso. That's correct. So the council had a total of $214,717 requested from a variety of agencies for, for outside funds. The, the budget was proposed at $187,517. That left a delta of $27,200. The council would need to decide whether they wanted to level fund or not for the, for those, for that additional $27,200. There are a couple of agencies that requested a higher amount than they received in the current year or the previous year. That was the South County History Center requesting $15,000, and they did not receive anything or apply for anything in 2122. They did get $6,500 in 2021. And then the Chris Collins Foundation requested $21,200, and they were funded at $10,000 in the current fiscal year. So that's an additional $11,200. So if the council were inclined to level fund, or close to level fund, those, those two items are potential, either taking them off, off the board or not. We did have a discussion about the Chris Collins Foundation having the potential for other funding available through the opioid settlement dollars. So there's, there's opportunity, potential opportunity there. And the South County History Center, it's up to the council. You could consider a $5,000 award and not $10,000. That was for matching, matching funds for a grant application they were applying for.
And we also could use some of the ARPA funds that we have not yet given out to social service agencies, correct?
You could, if you wanted to allocate a certain amount through this, but you will be allocating to some of these, potentially some of these same agencies when they come to apply for, for funding, so.
But that, any of these agencies, which we may not fully fund with their requests, could use the grant proposals through the ARPA?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. Yes, there's going to be an opportunity through ARPA to apply for funding.
I think what you need to keep in mind, that the ARPA funds are reserved for specific purposes, and we need to submit a grant report at the end of that, justifying it. So, I mean, capital improvements to a historical society, I don't know if that would fit into that sort of umbrella.
But the Chris Collins, I think that's for mental health, it was for the mental health, I think, at the middle school, I think, because they're already at the high school, they want to move down, I think. They're definitely...
Yeah, I think it's...
In mental health and social emotional learning loss is something that's clearly applicable, even on the school ARPA fund, so.
Chris Collins Fund, I don't think is going to have a concern, because we have the opioid money. I think they're the most likely candidate for receiving that money. It's probably going to be more than the $11,000, so.
Okay.
I would, I'm personally, I'm in favor of meeting the South County Historical Society's request. I think it's a small percentage of that overall project cost, and it shows community support for, you know, community resource. For the Chris Collins Fund, I think we should just wait for that opioid money. And I, I think the rest of the outside agencies, I'm in favor of where the requests were.
Say that again. Are you...
The other requests, I found no problem with those. So I'd be, just the South County Historical Society, I would want that $15,000 included.
Is the Housing Authority money included in your figures?
Yes, it is. And they requested an additional $2,000 over the current year. So they were at eight, they're at 18,000 this year, they requested 20,000.
I'm in favor of that one as well.
Terry, quick question for you. I know we got a town council contingency fund with about 55,000. If we wanted to satisfy all these requests and utilize that fund, that would sort of commit half of the fund toward this. Is that wise? Is that unwise? I know over the years, we usually rarely tap into it unless for sort of various sort of other reasons that come about. Can you sort of speak on that?
Well, I think the contingency fund you use when you kind of get into the year to set it up, so that you, you're suggesting moving some of the funds over to this fund before the budget is set, in other words?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
That's entirely up to the council. I, I don't know that that's been a practice, but...
So that would effectively reduce the council contingency fund in half? And I'm sort of asking you and the finance director whether that's wise or unwise?
I think it wouldn't be in, unless you're, are you suggesting funding every request out there?
Or every request, or those in addition to what we've budgeted for, if we don't satisfy all?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's $27,200, so that, that's just over half of what the council contingency fund. I think there are other ways for the council to look at either finding additional funding, like through other alternatives, like the opioid, opioid settlement dollars.
So Chris Collins could be, that foundation could have other opportunities, so that would take away 11,000?
11,200, yeah.
So yeah, there's a, the difference of 14,000 requested from what we've allocated? Okay.
So that would bring the average down to 16,000.
May I ask, did we use any of our contingency fund this year? I know we, we funded Neighbors Helping Neighbors, we gave them extra, and we used our contingency fund last year, but do you know how much we've expended of that, other than that?
I don't know what the balance is. I know you haven't expended the entire contingency fund, the council contingency fund.
In my entire time here, I don't think we've ever spent it down to nothing, and rarely spend much of it at all. So I think, I'm open to reducing our total contingency fund by half. I would actually say, just looking at these proposals, that we could take that 20,000 that's coming out of the planning department and take that out of contingency, so reduce ours by 30,000. But that's, we can do whatever we want, of course, with this money.
We, we can do a lot of things, but I think, what I think we're missing is, in the last month, how different the world is. And so a month ago, Putin invaded a country, and our gas prices went up overnight, and oil went up, and we're already dealing with food, and expensive food. And we heard that the water bills are going to go up, and the sewer bills are going to go up. So all of that to our community is nerve-wracking. I don't know, I know that some of you know I'm getting my master's in social work, the whole mission is to, is to help the vulnerable and underserved, and that I've become aware how many people are living paycheck to paycheck. One car repair is going to change someone's ability to work, their landlord sells their home that they've been renting, the rents get raised. All of those things happen in our community all the time. I, I care about the unseen, that isn't, that person's not here tonight. And we're talking about spending more by taking it out of another bucket, but we're not really reducing the expenses of the town. We're just sort of shifting some funds around. And so for me to, to represent to the community that we hear their uncertainty, I want to look at reducing some of the expenditures, whether it's looking at office furniture or supplies or the app. We try, we need to come down because other people in, they don't have the ability to adjust their income and say, oh, I'm just going to get more. They're living paycheck to paycheck, or hoping that there's some unintended, that there, that there isn't an unintended consequence. And so we need to look at some of those expenses, because I remember, two years ago, a council didn't change the proposed budget. At this time, two years ago, the council adopted a preliminary budget with no changes, and didn't respect the community's feelings. And here, that those things are real. We, we may be out of the pandemic, but we're not out of this. I read in CNN, the average homeowner is going to pay $700 more in gas, just for gas. So that, with the property tax, I just, that in my head stacks up. And so for those people, I care about what the tax bill is. We can fund the agencies, because I care about them, but we need to care about the 30,000 people that are funding our budgets. And that's, they don't have the ability to just get a little bit more. If they're living, if they only have one wage, that's all they can get. So the money comes from somewhere, so if you have less in your budget, you say, what can I spend less on? We call the cable company, we yell at them, we get them to reduce the bill. We try to reduce all our expenses. So we, as the leaders of what the people will pay, should try to do the same for them, at least try. And so some of these proposals, to me, don't recognize that. It's a shifting of little budgeted numbers, but it, we didn't, like I said before, we didn't buy one less pencil. Like, we're not buying less of stuff, we're just shifting. So that's where I come from. It's, it's, it's not for me, it's really for the unseen person who's worrying about their bills. And so we can move some money around, but I'd like to see some reductions as an acknowledgement to the community.
I, I think you're making some good points, Deb, but I think you also, you know, if you dig a little deeper into the numbers, the fact that the, the budget proposals took up by 2.26% when we're doing things that we want to do for the community, like increase EMS staffing, increase community resources, meet our contractual obligations with our employees, I think we probably are cutting back on things like pencils to make that happen, in the, in the face of 7% increase in things like fuel and other things in terms of inflation. So top level, it looks like we're not cutting things, but 2.26% probably does represent cuts to many things in the town. So we, you know, it's important to keep that in mind as well. I think there are things that have been proposed here that we can certainly look at. I, I, I'm totally in favor of reducing the OPEB contribution. We're already at 100% there. We don't need that. I think the council contingency, obviously on the table. I mean, if we want to tap into more of the unassigned fund balance, I'm open to that. I don't think it's a good habit to get into, in terms of financial planning for the long term, but, you know, in, in light of the fact that people are facing increased cost pressures in their daily lives, I think it's certainly something we should consider.
And we haven't raised taxes here in three years. Homeowners have paid the level taxes for the last three budget cycles. Taxes have not gone up. So a 2.26 increase, after three years of no increase, is probably pretty realistic. The town also faces those inflationary prices, right? We, fuel is more, gas is more. The town is also fighting that 7% inflation. And we have not raised taxes in three years. Because we were very concerned about the impact of COVID on people's jobs and their ability to pay their taxes. So we did not raise taxes for three years. A 2.26 increase after that, I, you know, I mean, I, I agree with Abel, there are things we can cut, we can probably get it down to two, a 2% increase without impacting any services. But to look to cut services is not something I think the people of this town want. I think they, I, I think the services we offer are something that people value, and it makes this town what it is. So I don't know. I'm, I'm willing to look to make some cuts, namely the OPEB contribution, because I understand we're at about 133% funded at the moment, so that's okay. You know, talk about the contingencies fine, and the council's fund, we can certainly reduce that by half to try to bring down some of, you know, the number to two.
Terry, is, is option five the only option that cuts services? Or do the 3, 4, 2, 3, 4, do those make an impact on the services that people in town receive?
So, yeah, option five would be the one that would cut, cut services. The, the other options, we deliberately, obviously sought out ways not to cut services. I think the council just needs to be mindful of what's coming up in future years, and how much, you know, whether, whether you have a 2.26% increase this year, or, excuse me, next year, or 2%, at some point, that's going to, we want to make sure that in '23, '24, there's not the need to have to bump up against a 4% tax increase.
So I will, I will say that the budget last year passed three to two, and that three of us voted to level fund the schools and move the budget forward. That's how the budget was passed without a tax increase to the community. What I do, what I did forget to mention, which we heard at the beginning, was that 62% of the community is going to see higher property taxes with, with the budget option. So that's real. Two out of three homes will pay more, whether it's, you know, people have told me, they're paying $80 more a month in taxes, they're paying this, whatever it is. It's just, put the list up, when you mentally write someone's budget, that money, they have to come up with the budget. They can't just say, I'll take it from here. They don't have that. Many people in our community don't have the ability to increase their income, and we've just increased the taxes in two-thirds of the homes. We, we, we owe it to the community to take a look at all of the expenses, because that's what our community is doing on their own households, in their own households. That's what I'm, I hear you. Gas is more for the town, yes it is, but so is it for the person who has to go to work. And if fuel is one thing, and, and, and food is another, and water, and sewer, and property taxes, they make a decision that trickles down to the economics. I'm not going to go out to dinner, I'm not going to buy this. And then, then it hurts Main Street. So we just have to be doing the same thing that people are doing in their own budgets, making choices.
own budgets, making choices. And so, I would prefer, I don't want to cut services, I don't think option, even option four cuts any services to people, but it starts to recognize that. We can shift the app around, come up with 5,000 to give to someone, all of that's there. But we didn't cut office supplies, furniture, or anything else, that maybe we could take a little trimming out. There's other ways. You could delay the personnel position, that the half-part-time one in administrative services, you could delay it till January. There's ways to find some savings, because that's what other people do. We would put off a purchase, if we don't have the money. We would wait six more months. Sorry, Rory.
Terry, so I see option three includes a reduction of the transfer allocation to the debt service fund, where option four includes an increase of the unassigned fund balance transfer. If we were to choose one of those two, the increase in the unassigned fund balance transfer, or the reduction in the debt service fund allocation, which one is more fiscally responsible for the town here?
Rose, do you want to weigh in on this as a finance director?
Effectively, it seems to me that the monies would come from the same place originally, which would be the unassigned fund balance, or the general fund?
More or less, you're, you're...
So, either way, really no effect, as to choosing one over the other?
Right. I mean, the council has to determine how much money they want to put towards debt service, right? So, that, it doesn't, either or. You could level fund the unassigned fund balance transfer to what it is in the current year, right? And just carry it across, that's the additional $120,208. Debt service, again, do you want to see spikes in how much you're putting aside and spending? No, because then that creates a kind of a red flag, in terms of when the bonding agencies look at the town, and rate the town in terms of what our bond rating is. We get a lower percentage rate when our bond rating is AA1 versus a lower bond rating. But, it's, you want, you're suggesting one or the other? The debt service would be the first option. I mean, that came from Zach, in terms of what he would advise. That's why that's an option three, and then the unassigned fund balance transfer is left to option four.
So, you're saying, I think you said earlier, the end of this fiscal year's anticipated debt service fund balance will be around 2.5 million? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that represents about one year of debt service costs for the project that got voted down. And presumably, any project that will be had going forward will be higher debt service costs because of increased costs of the project, maybe increase in borrowing, things like that. So, from that perspective, just trying to think through whether it probably is or is not financially feasible to even pull from this now, because if we start to now, and the balance is below 2.5 million in two years, we don't even have the amount sufficient in that fund to satisfy one-year debt service.
Well, you would have to, next year's budget, when the budget process comes around, you'd have to increase the allocation to the debt service.
To satisfy the debt service every year going forward for the duration of the bonds, we'd have to essentially transfer from the general fund or the unassigned fund balance, the amount to cover the debt service every year?
Yes.
So, essentially, that debt service fund would be emptied and replenished on an ongoing basis?
Mm-hmm. That's right. Now, there is some reimbursement, depending on what the school gets for reimbursement on the bond with these projects, but the town is, you know, there is, there is a financial obligation to cover these costs. So, the council has to make those decisions every year, based on what our debt levels are. Right now, it's low, but we know that that's going to change in the coming two, three years.
But we also know, we also, the biggest unknown is what savings the schools could realize from closing two schools, that they could then contribute to the project and the debt service. And that would be a council decision as well, correct? It's not prescribed by law that the town side has to fund it all, correct?
The council has the purview over the budget.
So, if the schools close Curtis Corner, and they realize 2 million in savings, potentially, they could, they would be level, they could be level funded again, they would have $2 million in savings, that they don't need to run their budget. So, then it goes right into the debt service. There's a lot of unknown on their side about savings that they will realize when they close two schools. And so, for me, reducing the debt service by 150,000, that's not a big risk. Because we know that their side has that. We also know that they have a very healthy fund balance right now, that will continue to grow.
Okay, so, do we, I guess, how long do we want to discuss this? Do we want to entertain a motion?
Oh, we would like to open it up for public comment, just to hear thoughts and concerns from any citizens.
Can I just make some comments before we do that? I just want people to be aware, the difference between 1102 tax rate and 1095 is minimal, minimal. So, if your home is valued at 500,000, your new valuation is 500,000, right? At 1102, you're going to pay 5510, $5,510 in property taxes. At 1095 tax rate, you're going to pay 5475. Do the math, it's $35. $35 on a $500,000 valuation between these tax rates. If your home is valued at 900,000, at 1102, your tax bill is 9,918. At 1095, your tax bill is 9,855. It's $53. That's what we're talking about here, the difference in these tax rates. $53, that's the cost over the year. That's not quarterly. That's what your, the difference in your tax bill. We're really talking about very small amounts impact to taxpayers. Now, I agree, any impact is an impact. But we're not talking hundreds of dollars here, between these tax rates in front of us. We're talking $53 on a $900,000 valuation.
But I don't know if that's correct, because the homeowner saw a 30% increase in their property value.
Maybe, maybe. Not everyone saw that, Deb, right? I saw it.
62% of the people have, correct, but it's not a $53, because some people are paying $700 more, because their valuation went up so high.
I fully understand.
So, to tell the people we're talking about $50 is not accurate at all.
It is accurate. Between what the options we're looking at, it's totally accurate. We're not going to get back to that rate, that $700 less. We're not going to get there.
But the person who has the $500,000 home was probably 269 a year ago. Their value was 269, and now they've gone up.
I'll tell you, if you were valued at $500,000, the old tax rate, 1452, you paid $7,260. If your property went up about 25% increase, right, and you're now valued at 625, you're paying less. You're paying $6,887 in taxes. So, you have to reach that 31% before your taxes go up. And what we're talking about here is, do we want to reduce the debt by, the debt service fund by 150,000? I'm telling you, the decision we're making here is not going to be of great impact to the taxpayer. We can't go back and redo their revals, right? That's state law. We had to have the revaluation. This is what the properties are valued at. That, that is not what this is. What we're looking at with the tax rates are the facts in front of us. The revale happened.
62% of homeowners, according to Terry, are going to pay higher taxes, because their property appraised at more than 25%.
Correct. We can't, Deb, bring that back to what, you're using the example of some people went up 700, $700, right? We can't get them back to that. We cannot. What we have in front of us is the decision we have to make. Do we want to, do we want to go with the manager's budget, or make some adjustments to it? And the most, if we took it right down to option four, the most a taxpayer is going to save is about $60. That's a fact. And I understand, some, 62% are paying more taxes. Yes, they are. So, is that $60 important enough for us to credit them back? That's the question.
When they're paying $700 more in gas, and they've, they're afraid to fill up their oil tank this week, and they're holding off because of the price of oil, yep, I do. I think it's tone deaf to not acknowledge what the community is saying. If you read the newspaper, you watch the news, anything, you hear how much it's costing, the average person. Sure, if you're, make $300,000 and above, you may not feel that. I'm telling you, when people say, I've rented for 13 years, and he sold the house, and now I'm homeless and living in a hotel with my two babies, that is a real story. So, to me, all of those things translate to, they raised the rent, you can't rent here anyway. I'm just trying to be as sensitive, and yes, I'm going to fight for that person who cares. Yep, they're not here, because they're worried about paying the bills, or putting the kid to bed. Maybe it's $50, and it doesn't matter to some people, but for some people, it does matter. So, I'm arguing for them.
I appreciate, Deb, that you're arguing for, you know, outliers and anecdotes, but we need to make decisions based on the whole community. You know, you got to look at the facts of Rhode Island, and our surrounding communities, where we are in comparison. Taxes go up. That is like, I think it's a parable at this point, death and taxes. The fact is, the communities face increasing costs, just like people in the community. And we're providing services that are necessary, and we need to continue to provide those services. Now, SK does a very efficient job of providing services. If you look at our debt, our debt per capita, you look at our total tax burden per capita, we're lowest, one of the lowest in the state. That is the bottom line figure that you can look at to compare communities. What are you paying to get the services from the town? SK does a great job keeping those costs low. Going up 2.26%, which is 2.26% on a tax rate that's 1.1%, is not a lot. So, I just, you know, we need to think about the context. Are other communities somehow magically not raising taxes? In this budget that's proposed, you know, after three years of no tax increases, 32% of people are actually paying less in taxes, and 67% of people are paying more. You know, over a four-year period, to look at that is pretty impressive. And I think it's a credit to the town staff for coming forward with responsible budgets, credit to people here on the council for looking out for everybody. But at some point, we do have to pay for these increasing costs, contractual obligations, fuel costs, those things are built in. We cannot cut the budget without impacting services that people rely on.
Thank you, Abel. Thank you, Deb. Yeah, go ahead, Jess.
I just want to clarify again, that options two, three, and four do not impact services offered.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, at this point, we would like to open it up for public comment. We want to hear what you have to say. We take it into consideration in our decision-making process. So, we encourage you to come up. We'd just like to limit you to five minutes, to give others an opportunity to speak. But if you do come up, just please identify yourself. So, come on up, anyone who wishes to.
Dave Cotay, South Kingstown. Jim Manny, congratulations on your appointment as a South Kingstown Town Manager. Tracy, thank you, and congratulations as well. We wish you the best, and we need your help. Government never spends less, and the outcomes in South Kingstown education gets worse the more government spends. That's a fact. I got a report, actually from Doral Beasley, that put together, thank you, Doral, he's in the audience. In 2019, the MCAS, RICAS scores that were put together compared 254 communities in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. South Kingstown ranked 137 out of 254 in 2019. You can look at the budget over the years, but in 2021, and I can share all this data, Doral can share this data, we went to 155 out of 254. We're getting worse. The more money we spend, the worse it gets. The RICAS results in 2020, 2021, for both ELA and Math, has us partially meeting expectations. Again, this report can be shared. These options that you have here, I contend that, and recommend an effort in zero-based budgeting, which involves developing a new budget from scratch, meaning starting from zero, versus starting from the previous year's budget. This up here, these options, it's noise. Okay, you're right. It's really low. And I don't, any of those options, I believe if you started from zero, and built up, and looked at it, and looked at the schools, 70, I would say 75% of the budget are the schools, where we have declining enrollment, declining enrollment, and our budget just keeps going up. Further, on February 28th, the SK Town Council forced a vote to spend 492,000 on a consultant to manage 8.95 million. This was worse than the facilities bond that spent less on consultants for 10 times that amount of 85 million. The original bid for the COVID federal spending for the consultant was 1.9 million. So, the 492,000, 492,000 compared to this for a consultant in Boston, on how we'd spend the money, it was stated at the Town Council that it's expected to rise. So, I request, for the last three years, I'm making a request to provide all the consultant contracts in the amount spent. I think it's time, we have outstanding town officials, I think we're spending too much money on consultants. I don't have the data, but as Vice President Abel Collins said, the performance in South Kingstown seems to be going up. I contend, based on these education results, the performance is going down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Just feel free to come on up.
Hi, Roland Benjamin. Congratulations, and I echo Dave's comments on your appointment. You can probably imagine what I'm going to say. Similar to Dave, I'm really concerned about the spending increases. It's spending increases, period. Frankly, discussion about a little property tax bucket, and what it might impact me, is almost insulting. We're moving an increase in municipal spending based on this budget of 8% increase, and a school spending budget... school spending budget increase of, spending increase of $5 million that's on reducing enrollment. When, in 2019, you, you all know me, you all know that I own a business. We had to deal with COVID just like every other organization does, just like every household did. Our 2000 spending in 2019, spending was $9 million. 2020, recognizing all the threats that COVID presented to our future, was also $9 million. 2021, recognizing all the residual threats that came from that was also $9 million. Our revenue was all over the place, but we tried to maintain every service we could provide to our customers without increasing the spending because unlike the town, we have no guarantee of revenue, none. We had no guarantee that there wouldn't even be a disruption to the revenue, which the town is, is very, in a very different position. There was no threat to a disruption of tax receipts during COVID. Might have dropped off a little bit, but those would have been picked up in, in future years. Unlike a 40% reduction in revenue, which some private sector people had to deal with, including people that might have lost their jobs, who lose 100% of their revenue in, in small periods of time. This was an opportunity now with extra money coming in from the outside to seriously consider something like a maintenance of effort transfer to the schools based on the enrollment that's been declining forever. In fact, we've seen, we talk about this inflation that was coming up this year. If you look at the per pupil spending from 2018 to 2022, it's gone from, or 23's proposed budget, it's gone from about $20,000 to about $28,000. That's almost 35, a 35% increase in per pupil spending. That's 7% a year when there was no inflation. So these are all kind of straw man arguments that are masking this $6 million spending increase that's happening. Most of it in this budget, the rest of it in the schools that you, that are in, that are tied to Esser funds and other federal funding buckets. When, when taxpayers and people in general get $2,400 per household in stimulus money, they didn't go out and buy a new car with that, given the person, they went and said, "All right, let's make sure that we can handle what's going to happen in the next two years," which we don't know. And it's really unknown outside of government. Government knows what's going to happen. You know you're going to have the same funding, plus and minus 2% or 3%. The rest of the world doesn't. So when, when those stimulus checks came out, everyone said, "How am I going to get through?" When the payroll protection program money came out to private sector, the only thing we had made sure we did is not make major spending cuts immediately. And that made a huge impact. And then, and that's what we did. We forego, forewent, a word? I don't know. Forewent any, any spending cuts in that moment. There's extra money floating around and all we're doing is figuring out a way to spend it and create new spending streams. It's like buying a new car with a stimulus check and having no idea what you're spending, what your income's going to be for the next couple of years. And I, this is just priorities, you know, we disagree, we are, you know, we've disagreed on this. I've been sitting here since even when you were over there, saying some of the same things. We all, I get, I understand the priorities. This is, this is a big spending increase. Forget about how it's funded. It's a big spending increase at a time when the whole community outside of this has been really trying to figure out how they're going to get through this future. So, thanks.
Thank you.
May I say something? So Roland, one thing, if you want to come back for a sec, one thing, I did think about what you had said because you had said that the ARPA money is going to be for new spending and I thought about that and I do think there's only one project that we're using the ARPA fund money for that was a planned project was for EMS. So we did plan to spend $100,000 a year for 10 years to build the fire station at Mattoonik Fire Station, to build EMS at the Mattoonik Fire and we are using ARPA funds to do that. So that might be one project which doesn't represent new spending. It doesn't discount what you're saying, but I just wanted to put that out there to you because that, that, that is speeding up one planned project. However, I do think that 1.1 or 2 is not enough given the costs of everything, so, but that is the one non-new spending project that we're using that money for. That's all. I didn't know.
Could I say one more thing? I know I'm out of time here. Go ahead. Okay. So in, in contrast to that, you see with the school spending plan, they're looking at dropping 24 positions. That's a, that's a huge number, but they're adding 16 or 18, I can't remember what it is, with the, the money. Now, if you think about who are those people going to be in the school district? Basically, the 24 that, the positions that get eliminated are going to, most of them are going to either retire or come back. So when we talk about whether that's a new spending stream or not, it doesn't matter. The people are, we're not, we're not dealing, we're not getting rid of people, you know? Not, I'm not even suggesting that we should. I'm just saying it's, it's new spending streams because, and we're just moving people over and calling it a different name, so.
Hi, my name's Greg Sweet. Two years ago when COVID started, we didn't know what to expect. I, I own a local business and much like every other business and a lot of homeowners too, they ran into financial difficulties pretty quick. Everything that we were going to buy for the company, we stopped. We didn't do any of it. This year, we were hoping to purchase two vans and we're not even going to purchase one. I don't know what's going to happen. You say $50 may not be much. To us, it is. You know, we're spending a third more a month in fuel. We have a lot of customers that are way behind on their oil bills. It's not because they don't want to pay. They don't have the money. Our receivables are way off compared to normal. So to say, you know, 50 bucks may not mean much. I think it means a lot to, to quite a few people.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else in the audience like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Doral Beasley. Congratulations, Mr. Manny. So you said, I think one of, I think maybe it was Mr. Collins said, "South Kingston does an efficient job of keeping taxes low." I don't think that's really true. Now, every year, we pay $18 million more per year for our schools than East Greenwich does, $18 million a year. Not only do it, we also pay $17 or $18 million a year more than 39 other school districts in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island with similar enrollments. All of that extra money is in two categories. People and the amount of money that we send out a district because our, our kids don't go to our schools anymore because their parents don't think they're good enough, which is increasing every year. It's gone from 3% of, of the, of the school's budget to now it's 5% of the school's budget. It's 7% of, of the property tax transfer that you send to the schools, the first 7% goes out of town to other school districts. The fastest growing segment of people in, category of people who live in South Kingston is over 65. The average increase in social security benefits nationally, the average increase per person was $92. But something else also increased this year, that was the cost of your Medicare Part B. That went up $22. So you take the 92 and you take away the 22 per month and you end up with $70. So you get a $70 increase and now you have 7.5% projected inflation for this year. All that money, that extra money, the biggest increase in social security benefits in over 20 years, it's gone. Matter of fact, the people that are in that category, they're, they're back in the hole. They're in the hole. Now, there are people in this town that are lucky. They don't pay taxes because they, maybe they still live at home. Or other people are really lucky because they live in homes that are owned by their parents. But I know for a fact that my daughter and her husband, their, their bill went up $7,715 because they live near the water. There are a lot of people in this town that live near the water. Your bill went up, right, Mr. Collins? I'll be back. You know I'll be back. You're going to see a lot of me, sir.
Thank you, Doral. Anyone else like to speak at this time? All right, looks like none. So we'll continue our discussion up here. I'll just sort of give my perspective. I think it's imperative for us to, you know, the council has an obligation to ensure that taxes are kept as low as possible as we can while at the same time ensuring an efficient budget that provides the quality services that people expect and rely on. And to me, option three meets that balance. I think option two looks like a great starting point. It reduces expenses to a point that doesn't affect any services. Option three is a, a good balance in trying to reduce tax a little further without having serious implications. I know that we are planning to have, to carry debt service in, at least over, in the amounts above $2 million whenever we take on a project that gets approved. That's what I anticipate. But I think a reduction in the debt service balance at the end of this fiscal year from $2.5 million to $2.35 million is doable and workable for this town. We have efficient and competent finance personnel that can make things work in our favor. I don't think that option four is preferable. I think it, it sort of uses and leverages one of the biggest assets that the town has, which is that large unassigned fund balance. That's something that is used as pledges against future debt and something that keeps us at a double A bond rating, which gives us lots of, lots of flexibility to take on infrastructure projects that we seem fit for the town. So for me, option three, I think gets it done and finds that balance between keeping taxes as low as we can without implicating the services that the residency rely on and ensuring that the quality services are provided. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thanks, Rory. I, I would, you know, just like to change a few things on option three there, including, including the $15,000 for the historical society. And maybe not reducing the planning professional services, but taking that out of our contingency fund instead. So that would take the contingency fund down to $30,000 instead of $50,000.
So where would the 15,000 come from? Possibly the contingency as well?
No, I mean, I would, I would just not, I mean, if we wanted to have exactly these implications and get it down to $1097, I guess that $15,000 could come out of the, I mean, it could come out of the contingency fund, I suppose, but that would only leave us with. Or it would, I think it would leave $15,000.
We can move the app money, which is just under $5,000.
Sorry, talk us through this app money.
We can, there's, there's, it's $4,995, so that could be, that could be reallocated to the planning, if that's what you're suggesting. Yeah, we're not obligated to renew that contract, correct? That was my, I was not. No, no, we're not obligated to renew it, but it's, you know, that's. We didn't know if we had a multi-year contract for $49.95. So it, it just seems to be underutilized. Only 1,000 people have downloaded it. It is a mirror image of what you can get on the website, what you can get on Safari or Chrome. It seems silly. There's clearly a better use for $49.95 than that, if you're not using the app.
So what about freeing up $30,000 from the Town Council contingency and then freeing up that $5,000? That makes up the $35,000 for professional services and planning and the $15,000 for the museum.
And there was also $2,000 for the housing authority? If we could add that as well, I'm sorry.
I do, I, I will put that out there, I will put it out there that they did form a nonprofit, they have the ability to do a lot with the 501(c)(3) that they just formed. So I don't necessarily think that we need to give them the $2,000 because that's a fledgling organization, which is, they will now be able to apply for grants. So given all that's out there in the federal universe, I think we might not need to worry about funding the extra $2,000. Again, they're going to come before us, before ARPA. We don't have to do it now. I would put it off. That, I, I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, it sounds, seems fine with me. Because they're a 501(c)(3), now they have the ability to solicit contributions, which they didn't have the ability to.
Right, they couldn't, they couldn't get grants before, now they can.
Got it.
So, so you're looking at funding them at the $18,000, not the $20,000?
Yes.
Okay. And the Chris Collins Foundation, where are we at?
Opioid Foundation, ARPA money, School Department, Esser, ARPA funds.
Not increasing their funding? We used to give, when it was swell, right? We used to give them $5,000, then we gave them an extra $5,000, I think, last budget cycle. And we transferred that money to the Chris Collins Foundation when they went.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
disbanded, I guess.
That's right. That's correct.
So I, perhaps going back to the $5,000 that we were initially giving to, it used to be DARE and then it changed, you know?
SK Wellness.
SK Wellness. There it is.
Isn't the $11,000 on top of what they got last year? So by level funding, it would still be continuing?
To level fund, it's $10,000. They, they were, the council authorized $10,000 in the current fiscal year budget for.
And they wanted $21,000.
And they wanted $21,200.
Right, but we had raised it to $10,000 from the $5,000 because SK Wellness was in financial distress, right?
Okay, so are you saying reduce the $10,000?
Right, take it back to $5,000 where we were with SK Wellness when they were healthy. And then the Chris Collins Foundation can apply, you know, for the opioid money and that sort of thing. APRA. ARPA. ARPA. So that should get us.
So that would, that would reduce the draw on the contingency fund down to $25,000? Got it.
So I agree with a lot of what you were saying, Rory. The only difference, I think, is that I don't see how increasing unassigned fund balance transfer by $120,000 is really going to affect our bond rating. Would, would that negatively affect our, our rating?
Well, it's just, it's, it's the pattern of.
The pattern of, right.
Of, at a certain level, keeping, transferring unassigned fund balance to offset lower tax rate, offset the, the operational budget, that there's, you know, there's the risk of creating a structural deficit.
I, I think right now with what everybody's going through, I'm in favor of option four. I'm putting less into my savings account right now because I have to pay for my day-to-day expenses. I think most people are feeling that. I really am interested in finding the best way to help the most people. And I think for the majority of people, anything extra that they have in their pocket right now is a good thing. So I'm, I'm in favor of option four, knowing that in the coming years, we may have to spend a little bit more, but hopefully people will be in a better place then. You know, people are going back to work, COVID is becoming an endemic. You know, people are going back to work, COVID is becoming an endemic. But right now, I, I think we have to be as conservative as possible, so I'm, I'm in favor of option four.
So I'm obviously in support of listening to what the community is feeling in their pocketbooks. I think option four represents a little bit of acknowledgement of that. I also think that if you're uncomfortable with taking one-hundred-and-twenty thousand from the fund balance, we could ask the town budgets to look at furniture, office supplies, tweaking down a little bit there. So maybe it would be, you know, taking a hundred thousand or eighty-five thousand out of the fund balance and fifty thousand dollars out of office supplies, furniture, miscellaneous things that are there. Everybody makes choices when they don't have enough money, and so they have to, they, the bills have to get paid. So I'm just trying to figure out an acknowledgement to the community. I'm definitely, I think we could do option four. We could continue to reduce expenses, look for that there. If you feel uncomfortable with the fund balance, we could get, maybe get some expense, expenses off the current budget. An eight percent increase seems like a lot when you say that to the community, cuz we're not all spending eight percent more because we want to.
So Deb, I understand what you're saying, and I know one of the things you raised was, uh, the fiscal impact statements related to the redistricting and the school closings.
Mm-hmm.
We will have that information, uh, by, by hopefully before the public hearings in April.
Mm-hmm.
To me, I think it seems wise to wait till we see what that yields, then upon looking at that, potentially considering a draw on the unassigned fund balance there, I think that's something I would consider at that point. But right now, considering the uncertainty, I think option three is most favorable and meets the balance that I'd already iterated before. And I'd prefer not to have a double dip into reducing the allocation to the debt fund, the debt service fund, and increasing the transfer from the unassigned fund balance.
Do you wanna ask the town to look for any additional reduction in expenses instead of, so option three A?
Well, we could, uh...
Get to B?
Sure, we could pass option three, and then at the same time, ask town staff to sorta look through all their departmental budgets to figure out increases in things like commodities, materials, things of that nature, to just find anything unnecessary, but not to the point where you're cutting things that are necessary.
I could do that.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, for option three, instead of one of these items in here, you're looking for other cuts. No?
Sounds like...
In addition to?
We would go with option three, but also ask each department to take a really close look.
At their expenses.
At their expenses, to see what, if anything, can be cut without affecting their ability to provide services.
To get to what number?
To get to...
To get to a particular number, to get...
No particular number?
Well, for me...
Highest, highest reduction is...
Rory, Rory's uncomfortable with the one-twenty, so the, taking the one-twenty fund balance out of the undesignated fund, so if, if there could be a savings on the town's expense side, to be, that would be option four, but coming at it from a different way. Not taking it from the fund balance, but taking it from operating expenses.
Okay.
So ideally, we would be looking for, and with, knowing that maybe that's not possible, but ideally, we would be looking for that one-hundred-and-twenty.
Okay, somewhere. So it's, it's option four-ish. It's option four, but getting the one-twenty from expenses rather than the undesignated fund balance. Right.
I, I would like to, uh, make a resolution adopting the FY twenty-two, twenty-two-three, uh, town council preliminary budget as presented in the interim town manager's FY twenty-two, twenty-two-three proposed budget, with following amendments. We are gonna follow option three with some alterations, uh, including fifteen thousand assigned to, uh, the Rhode Island South County Historical Center, can't remember the exact name, uh, and reducing the council contingency fund, uh, to thirty-five thousand, uh, including the planning, so we're gonna restore the planning, twenty thousand, and then there's five thousand in, uh, or four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five in...
In the app.
In the app, and then reducing the Chris Collins Foundation by five thousand to five thousand. Okay.
Does that reduce...
I'm sorry, could I have clarification on the last one? The Chris Collins Foundation, reducing it to five thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we've had, we believe that the opioid funding might help them reach their goal.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yep, we just talked about maybe the town identifying additional expenses to bring us closer to option four, but not using the unassigned fund balance transfer.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that that's part of this motion, but I think the staff is gonna do that just because we asked them to.
Yes, oh, if that's what the council wants, that's what we'll do.
Further discussion? All right, we got a motion and a second and more discussion. Susan, if you could take the roll.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Did you call my name?
Yes.
Yes, I, sorry.
You never call me first. Going by Robert's rules. Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose?
Aye.
Council President McEntee?
Aye.
That vote is unanimous.
All right, that's gonna bring us to the conclusion here. Uh, that is the preliminary budget enacted there, but we do have public hearings, two in April, and then we do the final budget adoption at the end of April, so we encourage you to come back. We encourage you to, encourage you to stay tuned, and, uh, we hope you give further input because we do take into consideration. But thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, have a good night.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Either way.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed?
No.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Sorry, Abel.
That's quite all right.
We're trying to get, I'm sorry, Susan.